Yeah, we're gonna call the main to order seven ten. Dan, present, Eddie, Greg.
Here.
And issues. Okay, some comments, we have David Culver.
On this here, it's discuss and consider action for the tax rate. You don't even have the budget ready yet. How can you consider action for a tax rate? I mean, every week in the lead or all these other cities have theirs already in order. So I don't know how you're gonna vote on that today when you don't even have your budget ready.
Okay, do you want us? Okay. First item is just consider action for tax rate, point four nine. Greg, you've been talking to him so long.
Uh, no, not really. I just got the information sent, that's it. She just said she needs us back. And the only thing that we discussed was this, our debt services comes out of here, and how much of our debt services did we want to come out of here? And this relates to like a hundred percent, so.
Okay, who filled out?
So we didn't know.
Who did this?
They did.
Okay, well, it says water districts are supposed to use fifty eight fifty eight, and this one is fifty eight fifty six.
I can't answer that, this is what she's sent us.
This came from Bob.
From Christie, yeah. That is, that is exactly the email she sent. The debt service effect here will be about the same as they are this year. Is that the print sheet that you had on there?
Your water districts do not use this form, which is what I got my hand on. It says we form two two three five eight, water district voter approval.
I see, I see what you're saying to me. Right at the top it says taxing units other than school districts on a water district. I can't answer that, this is directly from them.
The movies we're supposed to be returning by?
Tomorrow.
Even those on the lawn?
I understand what you're saying. I'm just relaying the message. It has to be in the paper by the nineteenth, I believe. Maybe it's seven days before the nineteenth. So they can go. Says I'll need this after your next meeting, we'll propose what the proposed rate is and the date and time of the meeting to adopt it. We will meet, and that's gonna be our next meeting to adopt it. It's just to propose it at least seven days before the meeting to adopt it. So she's gotta have it seven days before then. And that's all she's done. There's a request, point thirty three. Point thirty three, is that right? That's right. Hundred and sixty thousand back end for the debt, for investment group collections.
I think I'm hitting now. It's supposed to rain. Can't leave you in Debbie with any thoughts.
No, we have to recommend.
Yeah, they don't. Or just tell us that last year's tax rate was point two seven three four six eight?
Yeah, point three three.
And if...
If, if we, last year we did, we only, we only took off part of our debt rate, our debt service towards the taxes. This is relating to a hundred percent. We've got a hundred and ten thousand dollars in debt service. So that's what this reflects.
And that's that thirty three change.
Right.
For the increase.
Yeah, they calculated it out for the, for the total debt. If we wanna take the total debt, then we're gonna tell them what we want to take to a proposed tax rate.
But if you're gonna increase it any, any more than what twenty two three one four nine, you have to have, have a vote.
Right. But I don't think, I think she said that this does not go to that point. This was just below that or something. She explained that, but not really. Well, it's exciting, but I think it's gonna have to increase. Because we're gonna have to get some, some of this debt services paid out of it. Unless we have, unless we have an exceptional good year. So what I'm seeing is no new revenue, then we, then we take that point two two three rate. Right? And then if we move to go to the voter approval, then it's point four nine. And I think we fall right in between there, is what she was trying to explain. If we did total debt service. So we were, I guess, two two three last year?
Well, since last year was one two seven three. Last year's tax rate.
Last year was two seven three.
Okay, so, so what is, then? Okay, help me with this. No new revenue tax rate. Just that we're not getting any new revenue, is that what it's telling us?
Well, if you don't, if you leave it, it's the same. I'll explain this to you.
If they can't over.
Our property taxes went up.
Yeah.
So if you leave it at the rate based on the calculations that they have on the property taxes.
Right.
Then the city's tax rate would be point two two three one four nine.
Right.
That's without a hearing. And that would increase our revenue compared to last year's here. A thousand nine hundred fifty six dollars of seventy thousand dollars. And up to fourteen thousand, some hundred eighty eight dollars. Revenue tax levy of up to fifty six thousand nine oh five.
Okay.
The voter approval rate, if you chose to go over that, you, they're not, they're suggesting you do not go over point four nine three two. So that would give you compared to last year's a hundred and one thousand five seventy nine. So then over here on this, on this, this tells you how much your taxes will go up.
Right, right.
But it doesn't go up, of course, to that forty nine.
Right.
And at thirty six, see, it's going up fourteen dollars and fifty cents. That's the highest it goes.
Right.
But you won't be able to have a vote until...
I don't think we're gonna go that far anyway.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I'm just.
Right, right.
But, but that's if we went to the...
If you go over?
Point four nine.
No.
No?
Notice appearing limit, look right here. Notice appearing limit, twenty two three one four nine.
So then that's, that's the...
The most you can go.
For that?
Without having voter approval. If you wanna go higher than that, you have to...
Up to...
If he goes over that, up to that forty nine, forty nine, you're gonna have to have a vote.
So I thought we had a hearing anyway. I thought that's what this was all about.
You are gonna have a hearing, but you don't have to have. You're gonna have a notice and hearing. That's your next step. But if you have, if you raise it higher than that, it's voter approved. You have to have your voters approve your tax rate.
Only if it's point four nine. Is that not right?
No, that's not right. Look at your sheet, look at your sheet.
Yep.
It says notice and hearing limit.
Correct.
Point two two three one four nine.
Correct. And then what's...
Okay, look at the bottom down here.
Okay.
Says notice appearing the highest tax rate that it can be adopted without notices or public hearings. If it is lower of the voter approved tax rate or the no, non, or the no new revenue tax rate. Which they are the same.
No, I, I, I understand that part. What I'm not understanding is then the voter approved tax rate is point four nine.
Correct.
Which requires a hearing.
You're gonna have a hearing anyway.
Actually, actually it requires a voter approved vote.
Right, right.
Got you. All right. On the same page now. So then basically, all right, so...
Your revenue is gonna increase a small amount. Going up to the, or it's not really up, it's down, but it's more.
Right, right, right.
Because of the taxes.
Yeah.
The two two three one four nine. That seems pretty much same.
So we're gonna actually lower the tax rate, but make a little bit more money? Not really.
Well, we're not gonna lower it, it's, that's just the way it is.
No, I'm, I'm, I understand it. It's the way it calculates out, yeah, I understand.
You're like, well, because of property taxes, whatever.
Right. Okay, well, amazing. Well, I'm saying leave it at the two two three.
With a no new revenue tax rate.
Yeah.
Is that your answer?
Yeah.
State, I'm gonna make this state increase, and how is that exemption affect the cities?
I don't know. Just make a motion and we accept the two two three. Where is, uh, point two two three one forty nine? They don't recommend.
Well, they don't, but they do, because that's what they have it listed.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they give you some options.
If we wanna vote on a higher tax rate than that twenty two, then... You're still willing to increase it of fourteen thousand dollars? Greg gives my motion to leave our tax rate at point two two three one four nine. Janice taking in the motion? All in favor? Okay, discuss consider action, uh, payable invoice for Michael Grandstaff?
That one got misfiled. In his payment for that we had set up in, uh, county payable, not late.
So wouldn't all this, um, count sale, is that what you're saying?
It was, uh, it should have been, it wasn't. It just missed.
You said this was in the creek of where?
Behind Michael Duncan's house. This was the, the second one. Patterson fixed the first one.
Okay, and August we paid, uh, thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. So you're saying this is an August one in addition to that nineteen forty-five?
Correct.
So, um, this one is behind Shelby Lane and a pasture.
Yep.
That Marcus, what were those? What were the, the nineteen forty-five for?
I have no idea. I don't know. We can get that profiled, but
Or just for certain that it's not the same?
Yeah, yeah. No, it, it is definitely a second invoice. It should, uh, yeah, it's definitely a second invoice.
Okay.
I made the motion to approve, uh, county's payable for Michael Grandstaff, the August fifth, twenty-three, of eight hundred fifty-three, forty-six.
Okay, Greg gives my motion?
Second motion.
Janice taking in the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discuss consider action for Patterson, uh, Patterson Water final payment. So are they going to have another, uh, bill for September?
This is final payment. Is that correct? Final payment?
I asked them to send us all the final stuff and that's what they have sent me.
Okay. And they have said that they will not release any information until this payment is made.
So they're saying their file is August the thirty-first? They're not going to go through the contract that says September third?
September first? Well, that'd be the new contract.
So they're going to?
No, it'd be August thirty-first.
So their, uh, contract doesn't go with our, uh, yearly?
No. No, it's September first, September first.
Hi, I made a motion and we have raised the final, uh, Patterson, uh, payment. Pay final payment, eleven thousand and fifty-four.
Second.
Okay, Janice made a motion to pay Patterson Water their final payment. Greg is taking in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discuss construction for, uh, David Hamilton's credit?
All of his payments or all of his invoices were going to the wrong email. So he hasn't been paid in quite some time.
I make a motion that we pay David Hamilton his sixty-five, seventy-six, seventy-five.
Second.
Okay, Janice made my, my a motion to pay David, David Hamilton, his, um, attorney fees. And Greg has seconded that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discuss consider action for Fannie County appraisal district assessment and collections.
I said, I didn't think that was on the review. This is, we, we already looked at this when, a couple months ago. And as far as I remember, we agreed upon just leaving it as is with Line Barker. And, uh, but they need something in writing. Or is this not the Line Barker one?
This is not the one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is the city of Liddon.
They need the Line Barker one. Oh, I didn't think it was on here. So, yeah.
This is just the county.
Okay.
The county still collecting the taxes for Liddon. And this, and doing the appraisals.
Right. I made the motion to accept the Fannie County appraisal district settlement collection agreement.
Second.
Greg has made a motion and Janice seconded to, um, at Fannie County CAD, still collect the appraisal, still do the appraisals and collect the taxes for Liddon. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn at seven?
I make motion, media adjourn, what time is it?
Seven, four, six.
Seven, four, six.
I'll second.
And second motion, all in favor?
That's all right.